I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item for adoption is the adoption of the agenda. Everyone receive the agenda via board docs. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Thank you. Our next order of business is the reorganization of the school board. Our first item is the election of the school board chair. Anyone on the board may nominate another member of the board for the chair. A nomination does not require a second. Once nominations are complete, I will ask for a motion to require a second. Once nominations are complete, I will ask for a motion to close nominations. This motion must be seconded and voted on by the board. We will then vote on each nominee in the order of the nomination. Do I have a nomination for the Chair of the Montgomery County School Board?
Yes, you do. Because I think we need to keep consistency with the school board with the superintendent out, I will nominate Wendell Jones.
Are there any other nominations?
I move the nominations be closed.
I second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor?
Aye.
Please raise your hand and say aye. All opposed? We will now vote on the nominee. Our first nominee is Wendell Jones. All in favor of Mr. Jones for Chair of the Board, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have a board chair, and at this time, I am now able to pass the gavel back to the board chair.
Thank you, Dr. Staton. Thank you, board members, for the vote conference, and I appreciate, look forward to serving for another year as your Chair. And also, good evening to those in the audience, staff members that are in the audience. Give me a moment here as we rearrange. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the election of the Vice Chair. In continuing the reorganization of the board, we must elect the Vice Chair. As with the election of the board chair, anyone on the board may nominate another board member. A nomination does not require a second. Once the nominations are complete, I will ask for a motion to close the nominations. This motion must be seconded and voted on by the board. We will then vote on each nominee in the order that they were nominated. At this time, do I have a nomination for Vice Chair of the Montgomery County School Board?
I nominate Joe Ivers.
We have a nomination of Joe Ivers. Are there any other nominations?
I move to close.
We have a nomination, the motion that the nominations be closed, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we now have a second. All those in favor that the nominations be closed signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We now are going to vote on the nomination for Joe Ivers as Vice Chair of the Montgomery County School Board. All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have one opposed. All those in favor, I mean, motion carries. We now have a Vice Chair. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of the Clerk and Deputy Clerk. Are you, you with me still?
I am, yes.
Okay. I didn't want to go too fast. I need a, it said pause, that's the reason why. I need a motion to appoint Brenda Drake as Clerk of the Board.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Brenda, you're the Clerk of the Board. Brenda is now Clerk of the Board for 2014. I need a motion to appoint Celeste Parker and Brenda Blackburn as Deputy Clerks.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Celeste Parker and Brenda Blackburn are appointed Deputy Clerks of the Board for 2014. An adoption of resolution affirming the officers of the Montgomery County School Board. I need to, I need a motion to adopt a resolution affirming our officers as Wendell Jones Board Chair, Joe Ivers Vice Chair, Brenda Drake Clerk, Celeste Parker as Deputy Clerk, and Brenda Blackburn as Deputy Clerk.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising the right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Board Committee Appointments. Historically, the Board Chair has made appointments or sought volunteers from other committees and boards. Committees and boards include one member as liaison to the Board of Supervisors, two members on the Insurance Committee, one member on the Planning Commission, one voting delegate to the V S B A, one alternate to the V S B A, one N S B A delegate, two members of the Social, two members on the Social Justice and Diversity Committee, one member for the Southwest Virginia Governor's School, and two members for the Montgomery County Public School Foundation. Do I have any?
Mr. Jones. May I provide just one point of clarification?
Sure.
For the Educational Foundation, it is one member to serve as a board member on the Foundation Board, and then another member to serve as a committee member.
Okay.
Just point of clarification.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Drake.
We, I can't open that.
You can't open that.
Can't open what?
Is yours?
Can I ask a question about the different numbers on each different committees? Does it?
It's still stuck on.
Mr. Jones, the history has been this, but does it have to be this every year?
Uh, no, it doesn't have to be. I think we have from time to time, and I'm going to also defer to Ms. Franklin on this as well, is that from, from different years, we've had different representatives based on those who want to participate. It is somewhat standing.
Yeah, it's, it's, it has been standing except for, you know, the liaison to the Supervisors is always one, the Board Chair, and then our delegates to conventions and alternates are the same. The Planning Commission, that has been a two-person job from time to time, trying to split those responsibilities, and everything else is the same, stays the same.
Our Foundation bylaws allows two board members to be on that board too, if we so want to do that. It doesn't have to be like one board member, one committee member, according to the Foundation bylaws.
And I have no?
And if it is allowed, or I'm already a board member of the Foundation, I would like to keep that
Okay.
with Sarah, if it is.
Okay, we had. We had that discussion last year, because when it first came up, it was two board members, and we ended up splitting it so that we had one board member and one committee member, and...
I think we ended up having that discussion as thinking that was okay, because in that situation, Joe was getting ready to roll off as a board member on the Foundation, and so that worked that way. But if you all don't have a problem with it being, if it's not messing up bylaws with the school board, is that okay to have two?
So how many board members are there?
How many educational board members do you have?
Right now, I think we have, is it nineteen, sixteen to nineteen?
Yeah.
Total.
So two from, from this board really wouldn't have any undue influence on the overall board?
And it's not, you know?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so. I don't, I don't see a lot of members from the communities on board right now, so it's not, it's not going to make a big difference.
Well, let me do this. Let's go down the list, if you've got the list in front of you. Of course, the Board of Supervisors Liaison is the Chair, so we have, and next one is the Insurance Committee, and at this point, we have Penny and Dreama. What we've historically done is, Ms. Franklin, if you're interested in serving again on the Insurance Committee?
Yes.
Okay, and then we, since Ms. Foster is no longer on the board, we usually look to the newer members on our board, and by the way, welcome to the board, and look forward to having you. It's been a somewhat of a journey getting here, hasn't it? So, or if any other board member has a desire to be on the Insurance Committee?
I'll do it.
Okay.
That's fine.
Planning Commission is Jamie Bond.
Just stay there if that's, everybody's okay.
The V S B voting delegate, of course, that was the Chair, and then the alternate is Ms. Franklin.
I'm willing to do that.
Okay. Mr. Ivers, you're the N S B A Convention Delegate.
Okay.
You're good with that?
Mm-hmm.
And then the Social Justice and Nonviolence Coalition is Ms. Franklin and Mr. Ivers.
I'd like to continue with that.
I'm going to keep trying to make an attempt with that.
And then Governor's School, the next one is the Governor's School, and Joe, you're listed as Governor's School.
Goon, you have nothing, and I don't know what you are looking for, but...
The Governor's School will be fine, and I was hoping to stay with the Education Foundation, but if that's not going to work, obviously, I would like to be part of a committee, then I will go with the Governor's School.
Okay.
You can do that.
Or we can do that, that's true.
How often does the Governor's School meet? Just long that that doesn't conflict.
Quarter, it's almost quarterly.
Okay, so Goon, I have you down for the Governor's School?
That's fine.
Okay. And then the Foundation, and right now, we have Sarah Woolsey as the board member, and Joe Ivers as committee member, but you indicate that it can be a board member.
Yeah, can we, Goon and myself be the two board, two board members there?
And Joe Ivers is rotating off. Is that what I'm hearing?
Wait a minute, so I'm clear. What is Joe rotating off of?
He is not a committee member.
Not, not a committee member?
Right, or a board member.
Of the Foundation. And he's being replaced on this list by Goon.
Okay.
Okay.
But it's not going to say committee member there.
What's the difference in a committee member and a board member?
If you're on a committee, one of the Foundation committees, you're not necessarily a board member. You could be a committee member and not be a, and when I say board, I mean Foundation Board.
If I may, Mr. Jones, I believe that...
So that was a discussion that we had last year, not two board members.
It was, the bylaws of the Educational Foundation did not previously allow for, and they've since adjusted their bylaws, which now will allow for Ms. Woolsey and Ms. Coran to serve. We can adjust the list if that's the pleasure of the board.
So since our last reorganization, the Educational Foundation has revised their bylaws to allow to, to be on the board. Okay.
Let me ask this question. Could any board member be a committee member?
No.
Okay.
There does become the issue of three or more board members.
Yeah, you just couldn't do that.
I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, there does become the issue of three or more board members in one place, that's why.
Well, they could be a committee member and not necessarily attend the meetings, which consist of board members.
So...
M C P, Montgomery County Public School Educational Foundation Board Members.
But you couldn't have three school board members on one committee, which we don't have.
So the committee members would never be meeting with the board members at the same time?
No, not as that whole group together, no. I mean, we might have a retreat at one point, which we've had one, but right now, we don't have, there's only two school board members. If we approved this, that would be on any committee or the board.
Okay, so if we have two school board members in any fashion on this board, we will not have another, so we won't be, someone else won't be asked to serve on a committee from this board.
But you could.
Not if you're going to be in the same class.
Unless we have a retreat, that would be the only time that that whole group would get together. I can't think, I mean, there might be, like, we have a recognition of the grants winners, where there is something, but we do that kind of thing with, where it's announced, and there's, everyone's there. As far as I know, that's not breaking any rules.
Well, the only way it would be breaking rules is if the three board members start to discuss school board business. But I'm hope, I'm under, under the belief that you're discussing foundational business, not school board business.
Right.
Right? I mean, I've got to put my...
I would just would not be comfortable with three people serving on any capacity on this board, so.
Three, right.
Two are fine.
Okay, I understand, I'd have a concern about three, but two I'm okay with. And then I put faith in the fact that they understand what their roles are when they're meeting. So bear with me, board members. Okay, let me, would you, do you have this recorded, and would you read, read back to us what we have discussed, please?
I do. For the Board of Supervisors Liaison, Mr. Jones. For the Insurance Committee, Ms. Franklin and Mr. Lyons. For the Planning Commission, Ms. Bond. As the V S B A voting delegate, Mr. Jones. As the alternate delegate for V S B A, Ms. Franklin. As the N S B A Convention Delegate, Mr. Ivers. The Social Justice and Nonviolence Coalition, Ms. Franklin and Mr. Ivers. The Southwest Virginia Governor's School, Ms. Coran. And the Educational Foundation, Ms. Woolsey and Ms. Coran, with no designation about their role or responsibility with that Foundation.
I need a...
Wait a minute, what do we mean no designation? I thought we just said board members.
Ms. Woolsey asked that there be clarification, that not board member or committee member. They'll just be the names listed, now that their bylaws have been adjusted to allow for our board members to serve in either capacity. Last year, we had to designate committee member versus board member, because the Foundation bylaws didn't allow for two of our board members to serve on their board. Now that those bylaws have been adjusted, we just won't provide a designation as to what their capacity will be. The two names will simply be listed as the school board representatives to that group.
And with that, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
I still have a question.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
And second, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, now we'll open it up for discussion.
If we're going to have folks sitting or working with the Foundation, then anybody can work with the Foundation, and we don't have to do an appointment here. So unless we're appointing folks as board members or as committee members, which the president would, precedent would be Christiansburg Institute, where a Montgomery County School Board member was a board member of that board. So if we're just saying that you all want to be a part of the Foundation, then it doesn't necessarily need to be here. If we're saying you're going to be a member of that board, then that's what we're appointing you to. You can be a member of that board, not, not, not have us approve that here officially.
So, can I ask a question? Do you serve in the board member capacity now?
Yes.
Okay, so you are going to be, and when does that end?
My, we have different term limits.
My term, my term ends July 2014.
2014, okay.
So you're going to be board members?
Yeah, so you're right, your point is, I've wondered that for two years, but it's been there.
So when does your term end?
Mine, February of this year.
Of this year.
And, and they can approve to do it again if I...
Okay. So at this time, both of you are board members. So, yeah, to Ms. Franklin's point, it needs, I think it needs to state board members here.
But I don't know why it even has to be listed here, isn't that kind of what you're saying too?
Yeah, but I remember when that discussion came up too, and it was quite an argument, the fact that it wasn't listed.
I wasn't here when that was arguing was going on, I guess, but I...
But I mean, that, that's the, I remember that, and...
Well, the reason it has to be here is because we, as the body, are assigning two individuals from our board to specifically represent our board on the Educational Board. Now, if it was just going to be, well, any board member can go and attend or participate, then it wouldn't be here. You know, if it's kind of open, then Joey can, Mr. Lyons could go if he wanted. But since you two are the acting board members, by the way you're structured, it does need to be listed here.
But it is kind of conflicting that that board comes up with the terms and we're voted on, and then this board is doing the same thing, but not at different time periods, so it's a little disconnect.
In the past, and again, and I'll reference Christiansburg Institute, they asked that we have a board member be on their board. Is that not what happened with the Foundation, that they, that they asked that there be a board, school board member representative on their board?
Ms. Franklin, I think that there's, there have been several iterations of the Foundation, and so it may be that, it may be worthwhile to postpone this specific piece of the discussion. Let us pull the bylaws, there are new bylaws for the Foundation. They might not ask for a board member from us, but simply allow for it. We can sort of put those in line and sort of see how that works.
Yeah, because if they're not asking for a board member, then why are we voting on one here? You can be a board member, you know? I mean, that was in the, again, in the past, organization officially asked, we would like for this to happen.
And I remember that, I thought, at one time, they officially asked, and they were asking for at least one.
It was before this iteration.
Okay, and that's why it's here.
That's what I mean. I remember when the discussion came up, and it was quite a heated discussion over the fact that, so.
So...
I mean, there's a coincidental case in here. I could have been elected to school board member not being a Foundation member, but I happen to be a Foundation member and got this position. I think the question is if I will resign from the Foundation, if it's going to create a conflict, you know, as a school board member, if I'm not allowed to, you know, participate, you know, if there's, needs to be
No, I don't think that's...
choice in issue.
I don't think it's an issue of choice, I think it's an issue, based what I'm hearing now, because I'm a bit confused, I'd like, does the Foundation want a school board member on their board?
Well, I think they definitely do.
Okay.
But it's a process thing that is not connected, so.
Right, okay, and that, I think we could need to take offline.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but how many do they want? Now, I understand that the laws have changed again, bylaws have changed again, and they now allow two, can, two school board members to be on their board.
They want at a minimum one, but they would definitely be fine with two.
Okay.
If I could just interject one point, more than likely, they would need two because of the rotating process.
Okay.
You're coming off February, you're staying until late in 14.
Yes.
And there might, there might be overlapping there, which I think we don't, probably don't want a time when no board, no school board member is on the Foundation, and that could possibly happen with just one possibility.
But I agree that it's, that we just don't even, just at this time, don't have to have this on here.
Yeah, they need to work that process offline.
If Mr. Ivers is willing to amend his motion, we can do that.
You have to change your motion for the rest of this.
Well, we just have to defeat the motion and reintroduce it, so, are you, we, well, you could amend your motion to take out the Educational Foundation piece of this, if we wanted, and it's, it's Mr. Lyons' motion. What we just, I think cleanest way is that we'll go ahead and vote, and we'll, and come bring it back. So any further discussion? All those in favor of the committee appointments is read by Ms. Drake. All those in favor signify by staying aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
All right. Now, we need a new motion that, on the appointments, that would not include the Southwest Virginia Educational Foundation? I'm sorry, the Montgomery County Educational Foundation at this point, is that what I'm hearing? That that's going to be tabled, and we're going to bring that back?
Right.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the committee appointments as read by Ms. Drake, not including the Foundation piece.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now have committee assignments. Next item is adoption of resolution appointing agent and deputy agent for signing claims. I need a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the superintendent, and in her absence, the Assistant Superintendent of Operations to serve as agent and deputy agent for signing claims. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now, motion carries. Appointment of Superintendent Designees. I need a motion to appoint the Superintendent Designees to sign on behalf of the superintendent when she is out of the office. In the past, Designees have been the Assistant Superintendent of Operations, the primary Designee, and in his absence, the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum as a secondary Superintendent Designee. Next one, any?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Scheduled meeting times, dates, and locations. Our next item is to set the meeting dates, times, locations of the year. In 2013, the meetings were held at 7:30 PM on the first and third Tuesday of the month, and were located at the Montgomery County Government Center in Christiansburg.
So moved.
A motion, need a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now have our meeting dates and times. Adoption of Hiring Practices Resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt the Hiring Practices Resolution, approved by the Board in 1992 and adopted annually since that time? Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Adoption of Board Procedure, Code of Ethics, Standards of Conduct. Annually, the school board revisits the board procedures, standards of conduct, and code of ethics as noted in Policy 1-1.6. Do I have a motion to reaffirm this policy?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Appointment of the Blue Ridge Educational Television Representative. Annually, the Board appoints a person to serve as the Blue Ridge Educational Television Representative for Montgomery County Public Schools. In 2013, the Supervisor of Social Science and Character Education served in this role. Do I have a motion for the Blue Ridge Education Television Representative? Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to reaffirm the mission, vision, and priority objectives? Need it? Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I missed the second.
Who, who got the second?
I did.
Jamie.
Jamie, wherever.
All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Reaffirmation of the school board protocols. The school board initially affirmed protocols in 1998. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to reaffirm these protocols?
So moved.
Need a second? Got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Adoption of resolution authorizing the superintendent to settle claims against the school board. I need a motion to authorize, I need a motion to approve a resolution granting authority to the division superintendent to settle claims against the school board.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Announcement regarding the availability of the policy manual. The policy manual is available on the Montgomery County Public website at HTTP colon backslash backslash Printed copies are available to citizens as needed and by contacting the board clerk. And I believe that that takes us to public address. And this is the time when the board regularly sets aside at our scheduled meetings and up to thirty minutes for citizens to address the board on items of educational interest. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. We have a lighting system on the podium that will indicate the speaker has thirty seconds remaining when the three minutes is passed. Do we have, we didn't have anybody sign up? And if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak before the board, please step to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing none, public address is now closed. Next item on our agenda is consent items. And at this point, I'll ask if they have, would like to pull anything out of consent for discussion. Hearing nothing, items are approved on consent. Next item on the agenda is a personnel report. I need a motion to approve the personnel report.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the personnel report as, as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Personnel report is now approved. Next item on the agenda is payment of the bills. I need a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the bills? All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills have been paid. Next item on the agenda is superintendents' reports, recommendations, and announcements. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Staton. Dr. Staton.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, the first item is the grant proposal. It is anchoring and curriculum and teaching in children's knowledge ACT NOW. I'm just gonna read and, uh, for information. Virginia Tech has proposed a project to design curriculum materials that help elementary students develop key math concepts related to units coordination. Prices for elementary teachers of grades three to five will work with researchers to collaboratively develop and test these materials. Virginia Tech has requested one million seventy-three thousand and forty-six dollars from the National Science Foundation for the Monty University Project. Benefits will include professional development, teacher stipends, and conference travel funds. This is a resubmission of a proposal that was submitted in, to the National Science Foundation last year, but was not funded at that time.
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Now we can discuss. Any discussions or questions for Dr. Staton? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Grant proposal has been approved. Next item.
Next item is the budget briefing. Um, the governor's proposed budget was presented by Governor McDonnell on December sixteen, two thousand thirteen. Katie Miano will come forward to provide you with an update based on the governor's proposed budget. Katie?
Thank you, Dr. Staton. Good evening, Dr. Staton, Chairman Jones, members of the board. I am going to discuss the governor's proposed budget and give you some background before that. The top portion of this slide shows the total FTEs and expenditure portions of the budget from fiscal year two thousand nine to the current fiscal year two thousand fourteen. While this slide does not have the high negative cost decrease you saw in last year's slide, it does show that we are still down almost eighty-four FTEs from our two thousand eight, two thousand nine budget. The bottom portion of the slide shows the revenue portion of the budget for the same time period. I have highlighted the state and county revenue funded lines. The state funding has decreased nine point six million dollars over this time period. The Board of Supervisors has continued to support education and increased their funding over the past six years. So where do we spend our money? Just over eighty-eight percent of our money is spent in salaries and benefits. The next two slides I have will provide additional details on these charts, on this chart. Here's a breakdown between the salaries and fringe benefits and the detail of what makes up the utilities and fixed charges. This gives a detailed breakdown of all other expenditures, including supplies, equipment, technology, buses, capital improvements, and among other things, item, other items. On this slide, I would like to draw your attention to the line with fiscal year two thousand eight, two thousand nine. It's about halfway down the page. This is our peak year of fifty-seven and a half million dollars revenue funding from the state. Since then, state revenue has decreased nine point six million dollars, and the state has not stepped up to the plate to support education these last years. Our ADM projection for March thirty-first, two thousand fifteen is nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five. This is a decrease of seventy-seven students from our prior current year projection in March two thousand fourteen of nine five five two. So the governor's proposed budget, the first two bullets here are very important bullets. The governor's proposed budget contains no new money and does nothing to make up for past cuts. The budget, the governor's budget, proposed budget includes technical updates for re-benchmarking direct aid to public education budget for the two thousand fourteen, sixteen biennium. Then the next three bullets are the increases in the rates for the Virginia retirement system, Virginia retirement system contribution rate, the retiree health insurance credit rate, and the VRS group life insurance rate. The total cost of these three items, I've given you the percentages in the slide, but the total cost for these three items is approximately one point four million dollars. Just from the composite index change, as you'll see, our composite index did go up slightly. And just from the composite index change, there's approximately one point one million dollars in additional state funding. However, the three items I just mentioned regarding VRS and the salary incentive, which was not funded in the governor's proposed budget, is just over two million dollars. In addition, MCPs, um, did send representatives to the budget hearing, meeting at Virginia Tech on January third. The two rows highlighted in yellow on this slide are the two largest increases. The first row is part of the funding formula, the per pupil amount increased in basic aid, and as I mentioned, the composite index increased. And these contributed to our basic aid amount increasing. The second line I highlighted in the yellow is for the e-learning backpack grant. And if we don't implement the e-backpack program, then we don't receive these funds, as these are incentive funds. You've already received some information on this, and you'll receive additional information on this at the January fourteenth budget session workshop. Line sixteen, the compensation supplement, as I mentioned, is not renewed in the governor's proposed two thousand fourteen, sixteen biennium budget. And the additional assistant funds are not included in the governor's budget as well, as they were, um, related to changes that occurred in his twelve fourteen biennium budget. I didn't highlight the line, but at the very bottom, line forty-four, you'll see that the funding increase for the MCPs in the proposed governor's budget is just over two point six eight million dollars. As Ms. Blackburn mentioned in a previous meeting, VRS increases, salary incentive funds no longer available, ten percent increase in health insurance, one-time funds, and year-end funds quickly add up to over two point six eight million dollars. This is the budget calendar for two thousand fourteen, fifteen that you have approved, but I've added the meeting for next week for June fifte, or January fifteenth. This last slide is the budget goals developed by Mrs. Blackburn and her leadership team as the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget recommendation is prepared for the January fourteenth meeting. That concludes my presentation. I believe Dr. Staton has a few words, and I can come back up if you have any questions.
Thank you, Katie, for providing us with the most current information about the governor's budget proposal. Uh, the General Assembly is expected to convene tomorrow and will budget, and will begin budget talks in the, um, in some coming weeks. What I wanted to do tonight was to highlight and reemphasize the fact that the governor's current proposed budget does not restore more than nine point six million dollars of lost revenue over the past five years. In fact, although there is an increase of two point six million in state revenue, most of that will be expended on unfunded mandates, such as the one point four million that will pay for the VRS increases. The governor's budget also fails to address salary increases for educators. These were some points that Dr. Graham and I expressed to delegates at the January third budget hearing held in the Virginia Tech campus. We addressed the committee along with five other educator spokespersons. With much of the focus this year on mental health-related issues, I believe it is critical to remind legislators at every opportunity of the shortcomings in meeting educational needs. To the point, we are facing another challenging budget year. Now, based on your discussion today, we will prepare an initial budget for your consideration. Historically, the board has adopted a needs-based budget for their initial proposal. We are specifically seeking guidance on whether you would like for us to do the same this year.
Okay, board members, I'll open it up for your questions or comments related to the budget. We do have, the administration has asked for some guidance on how to, about preparing the budget, and it indicated as a needs-based budget.
Do we have the numbers of what we submitted last year available?
The amount that we submitted in our original budget to the Board of Supervisors?
I'd just like to see, just based upon, um, what we've, what we've asked for initially, where we ended up in those types of numbers, maybe for the past few years if possible.
That is something I can get for you. I could probably get you the immediately prior year, well, for this current fiscal year, if you give me a few minutes.
Okay.
On these charts in this presentation, where it says budget fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen, assuming that's the projection in these different categories?
Yes, that's correct.
And then on the planning calendar, is there a time that these governor projections and stuff, of course, were with a different governor than we will have this week? And this is the first time I've been on the board with a transition of another governor. Will the new governor give another presentation before this date where the General Assembly approves the state budget? Or they just, what's the process like?
I don't think we know that right now at this time. Uh, I do know that the bud, the current budget that was submitted by, um, McDonnell took in consideration that there is going to be a new governor coming in and that he would have some flexibility to, to make some adjustments. We, we don't know specifically whether or not that's gonna take place.
I thought I had read where the, the governor-elect had indicated, started to put together what he wanted for his budget, but I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe is of when he, he presents the, what he wants for his, his cuts. Do you know?
No, I just know that they'll be going back and forth as usual in Richmond.
Right.
No matter who's in the governor's seat, um, hopefully, um, our new governor will help push through more funding for public education, which he has said he will, uh, and especially with the, uh, pre-K initiative. So, it's right now, it's just a matter of sitting back and waiting. But for me, as far as what the superintendent is asking, we do need to put forth a needs-based bu, budget. I mean, we just keep getting cut, cut, and cut. And I'm not in favor of putting forth anything that doesn't show exactly what it takes to operate Montgomery County Public Schools in the way that the public expects it to be operated, even though they may not want to pay for it, but they surely want their children educated at the best level that we can possibly provide. And that's gonna take funding. So, for me, it's needs-based.
Any other comments about needs-based budget? Um, I'm in support of Ms. Franklin on the fact that I think it, the superintendent and her staff should put together a budget that's required to operate. Uh, you know, there's still things here missing. You know, when you talk about security issues, um, uh, you know, it's, uh, the, the whole VRS contribution and the way that this new VRS contribution, and as we've discussed in earlier meetings, the way a lot of this is being done and pushing this down on the localities and eventually pushing it down on the backs of the taxpayer, has gotta stop at some point in time, but I'm not sure when it will happen. But, uh, this is, it's becoming, uh, very unfortunate what is occurring. Any other discussion on the budget as been presented?
I do have an answer to your question.
Okay.
Last year's, um, balancing number was three million five hundred sixty thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars.
Balancing number is a political way to say that that's what we had to cut, right?
We had listed it as a balance required from county revenue sources without an additional state increase. And I think we got a, a small increase last year from the time the Board of Supervisors approved their budget until the time that we had to approve ours. So I don't think the final amount was that much.
Okay.
And I can get the additional years for you.
That'd be great. Thank you. Board members, any further discussion on the budget as presented?
Just, um, over the last three or four years, specifically, we've worked, done a lot of work on planning with, with our properties, and we've built some schools. Also, along those times, we've done some planning as far as programs are concerned. And, um, this year, I think we need to focus on personnel and students, pupils. I noticed that one of your, um, categories was salaries. But I also think we need to make sure that, that, um, we have enough teachers so that the pupil-teacher ratio is appropriate. And not necessarily lower the better, but appropriate. So I think we need to take a hard look at, at, um, as I said, salaries, pupils, and personnel.
You, just a reminder, this budget is, what you put out includes no increases in salaries, as it's right now. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
It does not include an increase from the governor's proposed budget.
Right.
Correct. Yes.
Right. Which he tossed that little pennies out there last year.
Right.
For that two percent for only a small portion of employees, and then didn't even put it back in for this year.
Right.
So it's like a slap in the face to these folks and, and to localities to say, okay, now see what you're gonna do. You got to cover that plus everything else. You know, he's a joke. I'm so glad he's gone. You know, I just, yeah.
Any other, on the budget?
I'm just telling you, what we've had to go through with this governor in the past couple of years and this shell game that he's been playing with the retirement and with wages and all this, we're funding, and then, oh, but next year, we're gonna be pulling that back. It's a joke. And we need to make sure. And we need to make sure that the public is hearing that loud and clear because it's going to be on their backs. So folks need to be showing up in Richmond and making phone calls and emails to these folks in Richmond to say, stop playing games with public education because it's getting absolutely ridiculous. So, more to come.
Okay.
So at this point, we just need to instruct the superintendent's office on what to do and how to proceed. Is that correct?
Well, basically, it's a needs-based budget, and they understand what that is.
Right.
And so then, if you look at the schedule, then that's when.
That's when we'll.
That's when you get into the real details of it, and they'll come back with what.
Okay, so they don't need anything from us other than.
Needs bases.
Progresses.
Yeah.
Right.
That's it.
So the procedure is they'll bring us that budget back, we'll look at it, and then it starts getting tweaked and added to, taken away from, and then we go from there.
Okay. Let me look here on, bear with me on the agenda, and then that's the budget. Concludes. Any further discussion on the budget?
Just for clarification, I want to make certain that your direction is to establish a needs-based budget.
Correct. You understand that correctly. Yes, sir. Next item is the calendar of activities that you have. And board members, you have a calendar of the various activities that are occurring in January of this year, which leads me to our next item on our agenda, which is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business by school board members at this time?
Well, just the next meeting is January 14, right?
Correct, next week. Yeah, if you look at our next, I was going to get to that when we get to the upcoming board meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Hearing unfinished business, new business by school board members? Any new business by school board members?
Yeah, yes, I have some. I have two articles that were written over the last several weeks in reference to zero tolerance, which is what we practice. And I'd like to bring that back for board discussion because these articles are rather interesting in the fact that does zero tolerance work and exactly what is it? And I just think it's something that we need to pull that policy and take a look at it.
Board members? I don't know the specific policy, but you're asking about the policy on our discipline related to.
Zero, yeah, zero.
The drugs and alcohol. Okay. Board members?
Can I give you these articles, and maybe you could get them to each board member?
I'll get them to you at the end of the meeting.
One was from the Roanoke Times, and the other one was from the New York Times.
So you're saying you want to bring this up for us to look at possibly changing the policy?
Possibly, yeah.
Or just?
My question is, are we practicing zero tolerance as a board in our schools? I think I need to look at the policy to see exactly if we're doing that, and if we are, fine. If we're not, we need to look at it closer.
I think we talk about doing zero tolerance, but then when certain cases come before us, but I think that's, everybody has that heartfelt, taking each student matter-to-matter when it comes in, and if you don't, then you're kind of feel like, you know, that you're not there again seeing the student and what they're going through and this and that. So I think we do have the zero tolerance, but there's extenuating circumstances in every student. So I think it's sometimes a, what am I, what's the word I'm looking for? You know, it's a double-edged sword because.
I'm confused, Mr. Ivors. What are you wanting to bring to the board about this?
Well, we're not practicing it. That's number one.
Well, it depends that, like, I didn't read both of those articles, but I read one of them, and zero tolerance can mean different things. One of them talked about zero tolerance to do with all discipline, not just drugs and alcohol.
Well, that's part of what we need to take a look at.
Well, we have different policies than these schools they're referring to. So are you wanting to change our policy?
I want to look. I have no idea. I want to take a look at it, and I think as a board, we really need to see if we're not practicing zero tolerance, should we be, or should we change the policy? I think that's pretty much the thrust of the whole discussion.
I'm confused.
I will say, my two cents of, and I've said this for years, it's not so much that we have zero tolerance within our policy, it's a difference of discipline brought out from different schools. That's my, you know, and we've had that discussion. So I don't know if that has to do with a policy change. That's just a difference in sometimes what the different four high schools bring forward.
I read one article, the editorial that was in the Roanoke Times about two weeks ago, and it was related to a children who was suspended. I don't know if you saw it, who pointed his finger and went pow. Okay, and he was sent home, and everything, they went and barred him. And I think what I read in the article, or what I got out of the article, is that, honestly, I think that we're doing, some of the stuff that that article talked about, that we kind of take things on a case-by-case basis. We just don't have this, you know, hard across-the-line thing. We do try to make sure that the, give the children that are before us or that administration is dealing with every ample opportunity to think. I think it, and Ms. Franklin has not had an opportunity to read it, but it goes to what you've been saying about the African-American male students who seem to have been singled out, and that the studies prove pretty much what you've been talking about. And, you know, I think it, if I remember correctly, on this board, I don't know, Mr. Ivors, if you've been there, but we've had the superintendent make some presentations related to, you know, the statistics of what we're doing as far as expulsions and suspensions, and maybe to help with this discussion, it might be better to not only have a look at the policy, but a look at, okay, what's going on with suspensions and expulsions? How are we doing? You know, we've changed it, we've relaxed it once before here recently.
Well, let me just. You didn't relax it.
Just let me make one statement here. There's many schools who are developing or who are taking on this new program, which is called Virginia Student Threat Assessment Guidelines. And I think that's something that we need to take a look at because it's, it's an alternative.
Okay. So that helps me from a policy standpoint. So what you would like for us to do is to have the board bring back policy to see how our policy is aligning with the threat assessment stuff.
Exactly.
Okay.
Do we want to see how it's aligning with that, or do we want to know more about the threat assessment?
Both.
Both.
Yeah, I think both, but I think she's brought, we've talked about the threat assessment, though, I thought we had.
If you all will recall, I guess it was last year or the year before, I was really, have been really, really pushing for us to look at what we're doing with discipline as far as coming back with, you know, seeing every case as far as drugs and alcohol and whatever, weapons, at the board level and not at the school level. And I believe it was last year, we said, this is what we've put in place, the principals will be handling things this way, especially when it comes to that consistency piece. So what I would like to see is how that's working for us.
Okay.
You know, we're a year later or so. How's that working for us? The zero tolerance issue, you know, some places, they get really stupid with it, okay? I think this board has worked very well in not being in the headlines for being stupid with it. You know, that's the only way to put it. So if we want to look at another way of doing things, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Ivors, as far as if we're not doing zero tolerance, why do we have a policy that says we're doing zero tolerance? I understand that, and if there's another program out there that says we do it differently as far as threat assessment, I'm more than willing to look at that because I think we really need to be looking at every way we can as far as discipline in these buildings and making sure everything is being done consistently to start off with, and that we're making sure we have buildings that are as safe as possible.
One of the things I enjoy about this board is that I can bring this up and you can speak to it much better than I can. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, and a point for our behalf, I believe since we did speak about discipline and consistency, I've noticed that I think we do have more zero tolerance toward drugs and things like that than in the years past that we, you know, well, they're having a hard time, or well, they had to do the, we've kind of said, nope, we're not going to do it, and this is the only way we can take a stand. And so I feel like personally, the last two years has changed toward being zero tolerance, more so than like Ms. Franklin said, some schools just are, you know, drawing stupid with it. I mean, it's crazy, you know?
So I guess the question is, Mr. State, do you have enough direction on this to, you can help us with this?
So I guess what you're asking us to do is to go back and take a look at the zero tolerance policy and make recommendations.
Well.
If I may, Dr. State, and I believe that they're asking for an update on a change to protocol that we instituted at the beginning of this school year. It's something that we had on our long-term agenda preparation list, but we'll move it up a little bit, see if we can get that done a little quicker.
And I think we want information on the Virginia threat assessment. I went to, I went to at least one or two of the things at VSBA on this, under the safety presentations, and I'll dig out what I have, because the state has come up with a whole list of safety guidelines now and checklists. And I believe that in the fall, the superintendent presented some of that to us, we've already seen some of this.
We'll pull the old information.
Okay.
We'll resend it, and then we'll look at what we need to.
No, it's a good topic to constantly keep before us. Any other items of new business for school board members or by school board members?
Hearing none. Next item is announcements and information. Do the school board members have any announcements or information? I would like to take at this time to welcome Mr. Lyons and Ms. Kernan to the board. Congratulations on your election, and we look forward to working with you. As you can see, in this short meeting this evening, it's lots of good lively discussion on all kinds of topics, and you're going to be jumped, thrown into the budget fire very quickly here, so get your calculators out.
If I could, real quick, I was looking on the Montgomery County Planning Commission page earlier today, and I think that I saw, and I can't seem to pull it up right now, of course, on their calendar, that they have a meeting January 15 with the Blacksburg Planning Commission. I just thought that was some information that we might could bring forward. I didn't know if that was an open-to-the-public meeting. You know, I know that's not the certain, it's not the town council, but Blacksburg Planning Commission does zoning as well, so.
Yeah, might want to check into that.
I'm going to.
Any other announcements or information? Next item is the upcoming school board meetings, and you see that we have a budget work session scheduled for next Tuesday at 7:00 PM here in the Government Center. It's a budget work session. And then the next school board meeting is the 21st of January, and you see the preliminary agenda items for that. You also see that you have a public hearing scheduled on January the 28th on the preliminary operating budget, and the time has been set at 7:00 PM for that. And with that, I seek a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Board members, thank you for meeting early this evening. Please travel home safely to your warm, humble homes.